Open Meetings Act posted on the wall over there. Please note that all council members are here but Councilman Doyle. As far as the consent agenda, all items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. And item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Anybody want anything pulled off? If not, Mr. McLean.
I meant the items listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
All right, you vote please. That passes 7-0. There are no public hearings, no resolutions, no ordinances. Anybody here for the public forum? Nobody here for the public forum. We have one discussion item tonight. It's the update of the proposed master plan for Paddock Lane and Lincoln School sites. As we know, we're going to acquire those and have planned on that since the elementary and the roads needed to be done. We'll let Tobias explain kind of how this came about, and you've got those in front of you, and what this is really a step to be proactive. As I think realtors will tell you, there's a grand total of five or 10 houses for sale in the city of Beatrice. That's pretty tough to get a lot of growth. So with that, I'll turn over to you.
Thank you. So yeah, we've met with JEO a couple of times. They're the company we hired, remember? We went and got us a couple of different proposals. We ended up selecting JEO for this project. We sat down, talked to JEO, kind of indicated what we were looking for. What we didn't want to do is add a lot of driveways onto especially busier streets, i.e. Lincoln and 19th Street, Monroe Street. So they kind of took that back. We looked at a couple of different concepts and some ideas that were out there. The other thing is I talked to some local realtors, kind of what size of house do you see selling in Beatrice? They thought somewhere in that 1,400 square foot house, somewhere in that ballpark was kind of the sweet spot, if you will. So we started looking, so okay, how big of a lot do you need to make that work? JEO presented some different ideas to us for lot sizes, but that's how we kind of came up with these lot sizes, make sure that type of house would easily fit on those. And we didn't have something that was too small or too large that kind of fit into the neighborhood. So if you want, we can start at Paddock. How about that? We'll start at the Paddock school site.
Tobias?
Yeah.
Concept?
Yes, it is a master plan concept, so these are not set in stone. They are subject to change. As somebody up here indicated earlier, up until the time we pour the street, things may change, right? This is just a concept and idea for you to kind of look at. And we'll have the public look at it as well here at upcoming open house, so we can get some feedback from them. We are sending invitations out to the surrounding neighbors to make sure they are personally invited, and then also we'll push it out through all of our social media pages and through the media, local media, to let people know. Again, July 8th, 4:30 to 6:30, Public Library, we'll have an open house. So looking at Paddock, we can see kind of what this concept is, is to create two cul-de-sacs. It provides kind of a quiet neighborhood. Yes, you could probably get more lots if you just lined them up and put the normal street kind of through like everything else, but then you end up again with a lot more driveways onto 14th Street, which already has a number of driveways. We kind of looked at this particular plan. We ended up with some duplex lots there. Those are the yellow ones. Duplex seemed to be very popular in our community, and we wanted to make sure we provided some ample opportunity for some different kind of housing, as well as we kind of built out these sites. The area on the bottom right-hand side, the green area there, that's stormwater detention. So again, our rules today say you have to site contain the difference between pre and post-development stormwater. And so you look at the site beforehand, a lot of Paddock Lane is green space, open field. And so when you start adding in streets and rooftops, you'll increase the amount of runoff. And so that is how you end up designing the size of the stormwater detention cell. Now, if you also look at that stormwater cell there, you see the contours of the lines. It is a fairly flat entrance, so it's again designed so the kids can play there when it's not obviously wet or haven't been raining, but it gives them enough place to have a green space to go out and have some activities there. There are different phases that are proposed, so the kind of the red box, if you will, is Phase 1, which is kind of in the duplexes in the upper right-hand corner. The bottom left-hand corner is kind of Phase 2, least elsewhere is proposed, and then Phase 3 would be the top left. I think if you're looking at wide that kind of order of phasing, 16th Street's already there, Park Street's already there, so the easiest thing would be the extension of a sewer line, and you could have those duplex lots, at least half of them, open pretty quickly for some minimal infrastructure to kind of get things started in this process.
So the septic, I mean the septic, the sewer line, the water line, our infrastructure part of it, how much does the add in there? I mean, do we have lift stations in the area? Do we have?
You won't need lift stations in this area. Sanitary sewer, if you look, there's a, we'll extend a main down between what we essentially think of the alleyway between... Can you get me on? It is now. Go slowly, come on. So what would be the backyards of those duplexes? You'll see we extended a sanitary sewer main down through there. And then if you look through the, over on the cul-de-sacs, kind of the hashed area that kind of runs through the middle, that's an extension of a sanitary sewer line there. So we don't have a lot of sanitary sewer extensions in the area. For electric, you already have electric in the area, so that's not so bad. Water, I'm trying to see where the water main is. It's on here, but it's a blue. It looks like it runs down what would be 15th Street running through there, extends through there. One thing you'll note is we added kind of open spaces on the two cul-de-sacs, so that if you are walking on 14th Street, you can cut through rather than have to walk all the way around the blocks, since it's a two-blocks section there, kind of a way to get through those. If you're asking, Ted, if you're asking on the pricing, we do have estimated pricing on Paddock Lane. The estimated cost for streets, sanitary sewer, water, those came out to be $1.2 million on Paddock. But that does not include engineering, electrical, or demolition.
And it doesn't include curb and gutter and street?
Yes, it does. That number is in there.
Oh, that's a smaller number than I thought. Okay.
They've got it broken down into phases. And this information's in your packet, if you saw that as well. But Paddock, Phase 1, like the water main for Phase 1 was $69,000, sanitary sewer was $34,000. So relatively small projects for Phase 1 on those to kind of help spur those projects along.
So just a question on, between Phases 2 and 3, the two pink ones, we show the proposed easement running from north to south to the second cul-de-sac, and then from the west to the east, but then it stops. Is there a reason why it stops there?
Because the reason is when you bring that easement down, since there's a sanitary sewer line coming down from Park Street, and then when it gets between those two cul-de-sacs, it would connect back over into the sanitary sewer line that's on 14th Street.
Okay. So if I did my quick math right, because I'm not doing it in my head anymore, you got about just north of $52,000 per lot for Paddock?
Correct. Ballpark figure.
Okay.
And remember, so these areas are eligible for TIF.
Right.
And so your question's going to be, well, how does that work if the city puts in the infrastructure? Well, then, the purchase price is a TIF-eligible expense.
Okay.
And so that's what would probably be the main TIF-eligible expense on those particular projects if the city were to be the developer and put the utilities in.
And if we're not the developer, if we hire somebody to do this, have you considered doing a different developer for Phase 1, 2, and 3, or are you looking to have somebody do it for all three phases?
I think you explore both those options. My guess is we probably end up being the developer on these lots.
But we are going to look.
We will look, yeah. We'll see what interest is out there.
One in most of three would be fairly easy, wouldn't it? I guess I haven't been out by Paddock lately, and that's pretty, still pretty level ground out there. They extended that for them.
Yeah. So did we, you, us collectively, do we have any traffic study? What this, how this is going to impact? I mean, the people in the neighborhood are used to having school there.
Right.
For, you know, seven months out of the year, the school's on, so they're used to having a lot of cars, but we're allowing enough room for everybody to park off the street and the added people driving to and from on the surface streets in the area?
We did not do a traffic study as part of these master plan?
Are we going to be required to do that?
I don't believe that we're required to do one. When you're asking about parking, kind of the layout of this, I think the only place you would have additional on-street parking would be on 16th Street between Irving and Park, because those houses face that block. I think outside of that, you'll see most of them happen internally, so it should not be additional. Now, if you get a good Christmas party, people may park some of those around there, right, and cut through to come in, but I think most part of me, you'll see most of the parking be on these internal streets.
Well, I do like the cut-throughs off the cul-de-sacs. My youngest son lives in a neighborhood in Omaha, and they have those, and it's definitely Andy.
Yeah. Having been, starting at Cedar School in second grade, or first grade, when it was brand-new, this kind of hits home for me and probably Dwayne, but I thank Bob and I think Dave would agree with me that the privilege to be sitting on this committee to get through this stuff has been just out of privilege, and I thank you for that. I think these plans that they give us were very good to start with, and I don't see a lot of major changes. But what I would ask all of us to think about is that the city should be the developer on this for several reasons. Number one, we can control what goes on there. We can put restrictions and covenants on there so we don't end up with some neighborhoods, as we have now, that they slowly deteriorate into undesirable communities and small communities within our city. So if we can retain control of that, I think it would be a small, in the long run, it would be a small price to pay if we have to, if we would end up subsidizing it to a degree other than getting a developer to come in and take it over. I just think it's important that we retain control of it. As we have seen in the past, it's hard to find developers to come in and take over the whole thing, and I just think that this should be something the city should really consider being the developer on. I would normally think that, but in the climate and the circumstances we have within our city now, I think it'd be important to retain control of what we're going to build there. And I think some of it would be workforce housing, the way it sounds, but we now know that that's, what, inching up $350,000 to $400,000 for workforce housing. So with that in mind, I think we've got a good plan here. I think the engineering company that did this did a really good job, and I don't think I'd fiddle with the plan very much, and I think they've done a good job. So with that, I hope we can move forward and with those things in consideration.
Now, there may be a question about why there's not a playground at Paddock. And the thought process behind that was you have Astro Park, Astro-Sertoma Park, that is, I believe, four blocks away, that you put in the splash pad at and that you are partnering with Sertoma today to replace the playground equipment there. So if you were investing several hundred thousand dollars into that playground facility, do we need another one four blocks away? That was the reason behind this site not having a playground. Any other questions on Paddock? Or as we'll move over to Lincoln and...
You know, the only thing I would say on actually both the plans, the thing that excites me the most is that we just didn't plop down and have rows of houses. I mean, this is, I guess the concept is really kind of a planned community, and I think it gives you a lot better feel than if we would have just went in and said, okay, we're going to put in 20 lots and line them, you know, north to south. So I appreciate what, you know, JEO has done.
If we go to Lincoln, again, we'll start with this is a plan, a concept, an idea, subject to change. The first thing I will note, in the upper left-hand corner, if you look at that picture, it says "future roundabout." It doesn't say tomorrow, but we are planning ahead, so in the event that we decide to move forward the roundabout at 19th and Lincoln, that you have sufficient room to put it in, because nothing would look sillier than if we sold off our own land and then had to go back and get it later to put back in a roundabout. So we tried to make sure we laid that in there so you had some visualization of what it would look like. It does not mean that a roundabout is part of this project. That being said, looking at Lincoln School site, what you'll notice is kind of the extension of Grant Street through the property. So again, no, there are no driveways onto existing roads, so we don't add additional driveways or points of conflict between residents and the traffic going through there. You will see that we're looking to extend 20th Street through there today. 20th Street just deadens when it reaches the school site. Makes it difficult for several reasons. Snow removal's one, trash collection's another one, but just for a flow of, the last thing we wanted to really do is have one mean of entrance and exit from the site. As we go through a construction project right now in the Country Club area, we know it's like when you have one means of ingress and egress out of a neighborhood, right? It causes some problems at some point in the future when something breaks, and so we want to have two ways in there. In the bottom left-hand corner of this site, again, the green area is the stormwater detention cell for this site. If you look at the contours, again, it's ideas for it to be gentle enough that, again, you can play there. The orange area sitting there is for our playground. So Lincoln School has served as a neighborhood playground. There's not a neighborhood playground. The closest one, again, is Astro-Sertoma Park, but I think we counted that's about 12 blocks away, 10 or 12 blocks away. So that's why we're looking to put one there.
A couple of comments that I've heard made about, and you can address this Tobias, is about some of the old playground equipment being moved and stuff from other sites, why that isn't really feasible.
So some of the old playground equipment, no, we will not look to reuse the old playground equipment that's there. If you look to move that playground equipment, it doesn't always move as easily as you think, right? I mean, it's been concreted in for a number of years. To try to pick it up and move it will likely result in some twisting or bending of the facilities. Also, if you look at the playgrounds that are now put in, our playgrounds are ADA compliant. The ones that are there aren't, and so to try to make them ADA compliant. And then two, that sometimes the one, if you try to keep the one at Lincoln, it would just be in the middle of the development. If you kind of, if you could overlay with the other picture, it'd probably be about the intersection of 20th and Grant Street getting through there. If you just left the playground there, it really kind of chops up the development around it. So that's why we'd look to just put in a new playground at that facility is what we're looking for. You'll also notice that we do not extend Grant Street from the east. So today, Grant Street kind of comes up and has that turn in it there at 21st Street. We did extend the trail system through there. There's a little path there today. We have the trail system, again, that kind of hooks up so that neighborhood can come over and easily access the playground and those facilities, but we did not look for a way to kind of extend Grant Street in from the east. Again, just didn't seem very feasible going through there. This site is also set to be done in a couple of phases. You'll see the sanitary sewer, it kind of runs down the middle of the street. The water main basically comes in off Grant Street and kind of sneaks around the cul-de-sac and then continues through the development. The estimated cost for this site is $1.1 million. Again, that does not include electrical, demolition, engineering, or the playground. So those things were not included in that estimate. And this site has 20 single-family lots.
Nice-sized lots.
Yeah, most of them are, 75's kind of the smallest. They get up to about 85. Again, large enough to fit that 1,400 square foot kind of home that we're looking at. Yes, if you wanted to be a pure developer, you could squeeze more lots in here, and we did look at that, but again, I just don't think that had that neighborhood feel you're trying to go forward with.
So the biggest question, Tobias, is when?
When? So our agreement with the school talks about us taking over ownership 90 days after they vacate the facilities. I've always estimated November. It's kind of what I've thrown out there. By the time they get moved in their school and clean up the old schools and take care of what they need to do, and you take, add 90 days on that, I always figured kind of November before we take ownership.
Okay.
Then you're going to have to work on asbestos removal and demolition of the current sites before you can come back and start to do this stuff. I think best case is you're putting in some infrastructure at one or both of these sites next summer.
So a year from now?
A year from now, I think you'll...
Move in dirt.
Start having some lots available, and yeah.
So I just have a question only because I don't want to pick on the community, but it wasn't very far away from here. I went to a birthday party for one of my grandchildren, and the streets were very, very narrow. These are the same size of street we have now, correct?
I'd have to look and see. Our typical street in a residential neighborhood, I believe, is 31 feet curb to curb. And you get into the math, you take a foot off of the curb, that takes you down to 29. You figure to park cars about eight, just takes you to 21, and then you figure you need 10 or 11 feet of a drive-through lane. I think you're supposed to have 11. So that's how you end up with, must be a 32-foot back of curb.
I just know some of the neighborhoods, you know, I guess, very bluntly in Lincoln, when you go down some of those developed neighborhoods, you got cars on both sides, there's one lane. And so I guess to me, that's kind of probably an important step for us to make sure that we have two lanes of traffic.
Well, some of the important stuff here also, you know, there's, especially in the cul-de-sac one, you shouldn't be parking on the road. I think the parking design on both of them are really good. I don't see an issue with either one of them, really.
So if you're, since we have time, I'm going to ask a question I'm sure you've thought of. So if, and Gary, I appreciate your comment about us being the developer. I just want to make sure that we don't get, somewhere down the line, we don't get, somebody wagged your finger at us and said, you didn't even try. So I want to look at, you know, making that offer up. I certainly understand what you're saying. So, but my question is this. So let's say that we are the developer on the property. How do we ensure that somebody doesn't just buy up a section of these lots and set on them? Because we have that problem.
We have. I think one of the things you can do is, much like we've done with some of the other lots that we've sold, right? The price today is X, okay? And if you build a house or complete whatever the agreement is by such and such a date, it's X. But if you fail to do that, then the price becomes X plus something. And that gives you some motivation to make sure that you meet those deadlines, but at the same time, we get the development that we want. That'd be one way I think you could look at handling that type of issue. And then also, I mean, don't sell a developer five lots at one time. Maybe you give them a rider first refusal on the next lot, right? So if they're working and developing, you can help them out that way.
I just look at it and think that both of these areas, both the Paddock and Lincoln site, both of these will be a very, very desirable area. You're going, you're looking at 20 brand-new homes, and if I was so inclined to do that, I'd try to buy up half a dozen of these things at the bargain price, and when the new homes are built, the value of those lots are going to go up. So I'm trying to avoid that. And that was, that was the reason that I asked if we were going to try to get a developer to do all these at once, because then they can regulate the price of those, but...
Toby, you can handle that in restrictions and covenants, can't you?
Handle which part?
Buying these lots up, so many...
Well, if you are the owner of them, you can control how quickly you sell them, right?
But...
But yes, you can control it through some restrictive covenants as far as, hey, it has to be a minimum of X, Y, and Z for square footage and amount of brick. I mean, you can get all of those types of details if you want to.
Generally, restrictions and covenants have to do with things other than the sale of them, but all that stuff, for the developer, we can control one way or another. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a council to, we've got one shot to get this right, I think, and we want to make sure we do the best we can do with it.
Yeah, I agree. Last question from me. $2.3 million. Where are you getting that?
All right, so great question.
I mean, we're going, you're going to get it back.
Yes.
But where are you getting it?
Not right away.
But not right, well, you never know, Bob.
Well, that's true.
You know?
And I think that goes back a little bit. I think one of the reasons, also one of the concepts, is we just didn't want to throw it out there for a developer. At least if we put it out there and there is a really good developer, at least now he's got a map of what we want to have done. Now, again, it's tough to find somebody in that development age, and I agree with this, but it's kind of nice to be able to control your own destiny.
Yep.
But on the other side of the coin, at least now, hey, this is what you can, this is how we want it, and I think of, you know, what, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, concepts like this can then be applied to other areas that we get land for.
Let's hope.
And so, yeah, so we're really starting to look at also not only a developed community, but we're also looking for kind of a plan or a model that we can continue long after I'm gone.
You know, you keep saying that. Every time I ask you about something, you say that.
Well, I'm a realist.
So typically on a development, right, the developer's responsible for the extension of the utilities. Pretty common place where we're at. So if we were the developer, let's just go down that path, because if they're the developer, it's easier, right? They're writing the check back to us and taking care of it like they normally do. But if we're the developer, what we would probably look to do is have the WPC pay for the sanitary sewer extension, because it's their project, right? And electric would pay for their extension, because it's theirs, right? And they just fit that into their budget. They have a line item for construction for new projects. We may need to bump it up that year, but they would handle those types of things through their budget. The difficult one is the streets. Because if you look at this between the street and the sanitary, or excuse me, the storm sewer, you got about $1.1 million in these two, between the two projects in just street work, okay? Well, if you remember, you have in your budget this year, $1.1 million to do a large street project. Now, we've already taken about $275,000 of that and earmarked it towards the CCCFF grant in the downtown for the street modification, right? So if you take some rough numbers, you take 1.1, you take off 275, it gets you about $825,000, right? Ballpark, somewhere in there. So I think you got about $800,000 in the budget this year to work with, right? I think you got like three options. One, you could apply it to these. Now, you're going to say, well, $800,000 is not 1.1 million. Correct.
It's close.
It's close. If you read through that, there's some contingency numbers in there, right? Two, you start talking about size of the street, some of that, so that may fluctuate, whether they designed it to be a 34 and it's really a 32. Maybe we'd get into the details and get there. The other part is you don't need to pour all the street today. Again, you can pour in phases, and so maybe you pour one cul-de-sac but not the other one. So there's some ways to work through that one. The other option that you have out there in front of you is Lincoln Street, 27th to 25th, right? The current project at Lincoln and 33rd stops at about 27th. We have looked at continuing through 20, about 25th Street, where there's no curb and gutter and no sidewalks along Lincoln Street. We've got an estimate from JEO for design, and James has put together an estimate for construction, and we think that's going to be about $925,000. So again, similar price, puts you in that same ballpark, right? You could just, then you'd have Lincoln Street done out to the new school. The other option you have is today, 33rd and Lincoln Street, we're all in about just under $3 million, okay? Between the contracts we have signed and the engineering, everything else, you're just under three. Well, we have enough cash on hand to pay for some of it, but we are looking to borrow, again, from the water, electric, WPC, those kind of things. Well, instead of borrowing, you could use that $800,000 to just pay for 33rd and Lincoln Street.
Okay.
I know where you're at.
I know right where you're at. I'm following you. I got you. I'm doing it in my head. I'm good.
So those are some options I see out there. If you said, hey, listen, what would we do? There is the Rural Workforce Housing Fund, right? Main Street just got a grant for one of these, but there's also another one at SIN that we're a member of. The city could apply for that. It's a loan. You could put some infrastructure in, and then as lots sold, pay back that loan back to SIN. to Senn. So another option is out there for some of the improvements that we're looking at.
Okay.
Doesn't it make sense when we do this to do the streets? I mean, there are more attractive lots when you can drive down them, you can see the streets in there. I mean, if we're going to do it, I think we do it the right way, right off the bat.
I think so, but I think you also, I mean, if you look, again, if you look at Paddock, do you need to pour both cul-de-sacs at once and open all lots up? Do you pour one cul-de-sac? You know, I think that's something to talk about and think through as we go forward. I look at Woodland Avenue out in Glenover, right? He poured 100 feet and put in two houses. And he poured the next 100 feet, he put in two houses. And he kind of did it slow, all right? Seemed to work just fine. I know other places. I was not here when Lake Ladue was designed and built, but my understanding is we poured all the street, not we, but the developer poured all the street, and that didn't turn out so well.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think you can argue both ways.
I think Country Club Lane was the same way.
Same way, yeah.
Yeah, we sat, we sat here and we ended up with all those.
But I think that we've learned something since then.
Yeah. Yeah, we sat here and sold those off lot by lot.
But Gary, certainly, would there be an economy of scale if you poured all of them at once? Yes, there's one mobilization fee, right? And you could probably get a better price per square foot, and then you just look to see what the pocketbook can handle at that time.
Well, it's, it's nice to have cash reserves in all of those different departments and cash reserves in the general fund to have all of those options that, you know, normally you don't have those. I mean, mom and pop budget, you don't, you don't generally have those in, in your home budget. So, yeah, good problem, good problem to have.
So what would we say in today's market each one of these pink lots would be worth? Do we got any idea?
$60,000.
Well, you got 52,000 in specials, in assessments.
And Lincoln's a little lower than that if you do the math.
Yeah.
But do I think they can handle 52? That'd be another question that we have to work on. You know, is the city eager to see them to be developed and you sell them for 40, right? And we understand we're taking a haircut on each one, but we want to see them developed. Or is it, hey, we're going to stick to 52 and that's what we're going to go with? I think that's a decision that this council would have to make. I have not done a market analysis by any stretch of imagination to come back and tell you that, hey, I think each lot is worth 30 or 60. I couldn't tell you that one.
Tobias, I do think with the situation we're in, when we agreed to acquire this property, I think the long-term thing to look at is a tax return on the property. I think we'd be a little bit short-sighted if we didn't take that into consideration. It's a long-term deal. It's not an ideal thing for us, but I think it's the best we can do.
I mean, if you figure Lincoln site has 20 lots, if each house gets assessed at $200,000, it's $4 million of assessments on that lot that today has zero.
Good price.
And you start to do the math, you know, it generates $73,000 in property tax revenue, not all of ours, right? But $73,000 in property tax revenue on Lincoln School site per year for the school and for the county, for us and others. So, yeah.
So how does TIF work off of that 52,000?
So the TIF expense then would go back to, again, you would find a way to come back and help pay for the infrastructure that was put in.
Okay. So if we sold it for 40 and they use TIF, we still would have the ability to get closer to that 50.
Yes.
If I'm a neighborhood member living next to those elementary schools, I'm ecstatic. Their biggest fear was is that you're going to take over those schools and you're going to let those places just get torn down and just be an eyesore. And now with this proactive attitude, we're literally killing two birds with one stone, and they're going to see a brand-new neighborhood develop right in front of them. And the value of their property and everything else around it is, is going to be enhanced. It's a great project, very well-designed, and I think everybody involved should be thrilled where this will be in five years, maybe 10 years.
I will tell you, for one person that has two homes within two blocks of Paddock Lane School, I'm very happy to see this, you know, because I think, you know, the traffic-wise, you know, it's heavy. It's still heavy right now because they've got something going on at Paddock Lane School right now. But this will, you know, so I'm not worried about the traffic problems with it here, but it's going to definitely improve the whole neighborhood.
Dave was absolutely right. I talked to a young lady, or she called me wanting to know, when you tear those down, you're going to, what are you going to do? And of course, I said, we're going to try to develop it, but this is, this is outstanding. I really like it, except for one thing I want to repeat, because it's going to get out. The roundabout is future, and it could be a four-way stop. It may not be a roundabout. So before it gets on social media that the council has passed a roundabout, we have not made the decision on the roundabout.
That's because this is a concept. Keep that in mind. It's a concept.
Yes.
But back to the planning and design, I mean, this is a home run right here. There's, this is a, you could come to this with a swing and a miss, but I think JEO, what they've done here is, you can't mess this up. This is perfect.
Well, I think the size of the home fits nicely in the neighborhood.
Yes.
I think, you know, you could go with a bigger lot and then you put a big house in there, it's just not going to give you that neighborhood feel. And so I think it fits right into all the homes in that neighborhood. So, yeah, I agree.
Most of those homes are well-kept and looks nice up in there.
Well, and Tobias, haven't you, you've said in some conversations that we've had, you don't have developers ringing your phone off the wall to come down, but you have a lot of builders that are looking for lots, and that's exactly what will be given them.
Yeah, yeah, I have a number of builders who are interested in coming and getting a lot or two and start putting houses up. We'll shake the tree and see what we can find for developers that want to come take 20 lots. But yeah, we have a lot of builders who are very eager to get started.
Good deal.
So yes, a couple of things to take away. One, the roundabouts for design purposes only, right? Two, it is a concept. It is subject to change. So again, we'll look to get feedback from the public. And then finally, that open house is July 8th from 4:30 to 6:30 at the library. We invite everybody to be there. JEO will be there. We'll have boards up. Have you been to an open house before? It's kind of come and go as you want to, but we'll have several people there to answer questions and get feedback from people as far as what they like, what questions or concerns that they still have, and what kind of recreational facilities that they're interested in.
He's got someone pulling his backyard.
So those are the types of things that we'll take back at that one.
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, it's right here. Yeah. High Street, 20th and 9th.
And then the other thing to remember is, yeah, we've got to talk about what to do with those other funds, because quite honestly, with the, the schedule that Constructors has come out with for Lincoln and 33rd Streets, we're going to have to push on JEO hard to try to get them to have that extension designed in time for Constructors to do it while they're still here, if that's, if that's, if that's an option for us.
So we can't mess around with part of this send very long.
We kind of got to decide what we want to do with that $800,000 fairly quickly. Yes. But again, I think there are all good problems to have. I think you need to, you can argue for any of all of them.
So we have the open house on July 8th. What time is that?
4:30 to 6:30.
This is, I asked him.
So there's no council meeting that night.
Yep.
But we try to make sure we catch people as they're coming home from work. I know once you get home, you're less late to come back out, and so we try to make it so you can just hit on your way home and stop in.
But yeah. Nice to do it. Yeah, it really is.
So maybe to just wrap this up, you're going to get questions. What about the other two schools? And if you think about it, we've already got a probably pretty good plan with Hoppy for Stotter. That leaves Cedar. And as we develop this plan, I think at least conversation should be, at this point, do we somewhat mothball it? Take a deep breath, see where we're at here, and then figure out how do we eat that elephant? Because it's not only the property there, but there's a lot of property there. And so to figure out what the best use is and how it fits, maybe we step back and we take care of that property and keep it up, but don't develop anything or do anything at that, at this particular point in time. I think that's, at least, that's kind of one of the thoughts that I've had, and I think Tobias has, and I think, you know, several is that you just don't, you know, let's take some time and figure out Cedar based on the size.
When you said, take care of the property, when you're talking about tearing the schools down, is Cedar included in tearing that down and then we'll keep the, or are we going to have an empty building?
I think at this point, we're looking to have an empty building to start with. Now, it may depend on what other prices come in, and we have some people who are interested in the building itself. I think we need to get into the building and assess it. We have not had access to those buildings and no, hey, is this anything even feasible to continue to fix up and operate or not?
I just don't want an empty building over there that's having rocks thrown and the windows broke out and stuff like that.
Create another Demsters.
Exactly, not another Demsters.
Right? Yeah. And, you know, if it's possible to take it down, we should take it down and then, but I'm just saying, I just don't want a building that's going to be-
Sure. No, I think, I think that's the last thing all of us want.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't want to drive by for three years and have it be boarded up for three or four years. That's not, no. I think for me, the intention was, let's take a, let's take a brief breath and let's